Of the 15-minute meeting, discussion of the 2022 proposed city budget come to order. Questions from council?
There's a whole lot of questions.
Start it out.
Well, does the public have questions about it?
Well, hopefully, the public could talk to you guys, too, but we can start with the public.
Would anybody from the public like to ask any questions in regards to the 2022 proposed budget?
Please, please stand up here, please, so we can hear.
My understanding is that the $12 we pay a month for trash pickup was going to go to $15 a month, is that so?
It is. We're trying to do that. We're trying to. It's when it was implemented at $12 a month, it has never been increased since that first inception. What we want to do is increase it to $15 a month per household and do away with everyone having to come in to get a permit, to get rid of a chair, a couch, a love seat, a set of box springs, or anything like that.
So, how often do people come in to get permits for that?
Pardon me?
How often do people come in to get a permit to have something like that taken away?
Well, some people may never come in there. Other people come in on a, you know, six-month, eight-month basis. But the only thing is, if we go ahead and do it to $15, everything throughout the city will be picked up when it's put out there.
Mayor, I don't want to be rude, but this isn't a part of the budget. This hearing is, this public hearing is strictly related to the budget. We need to keep it at that.
Well, isn't that money going into the budget? Where does it go? It's part of the budget, isn't it?
It's not built into the budget at this point. It's going into the general, it'll go into the general fund.
That's good that you're making sure everyone's aware of it, Janelle, because that is coming down the pike. And now people from the public can say something to the mayor, like, please don't increase that. We don't want that increase of $36 a month. But he's right, it doesn't have anything to do with the budget, and that's probably why he shouldn't be running the meeting, that I should be running the meeting, because I know what's allowed and what's not. So, but that's a good question, Janelle.
Okay. The next question is, is there money in the budget for a sidewalk down to the new Y?
No, there isn't.
Why not?
Why, that is not a member of the budget either. I mean, the thing is, we have the walkway.
No, we do.
We have the walkway already open that's clear down to the new Y.
Yeah, but a lot of people don't want to walk all the way to that walkway to walk down the street when they can, when they live right there on Canal, and they can just get on the sidewalk and walk down there. I mean, I'm not going to walk all the way over to the walkway to walk down to the Y if I wanted to go down there.
It's really not that far over to the walkway to walk to the Y.
Okay. Maybe not for you, because you don't live over there. So, you don't think that they need sidewalks? The kids need, probably need a sidewalk that don't.
No, I didn't say that. I'd say, you asked if it was in the budget, and I said no.
And you said no. So, is it ever going to be in the budget?
It won't be for next year.
Okay.
I'm not saying about the future, but for next year, it's not in the budget.
Okay. So, getting back to this, when do we discuss this $15 a month?
You can call me anytime you want to. Come up to my office.
But the public need to know how much money each household will be paying in Miami, in the city.
Mayor, may I?
It's $180 a year, which runs to about $86,000 a year for the residents of the Peru, not the county.
But that also goes for your trash pickup, your streets, your alleys, and anything else that the city does for you.
May I be recognized, please?
Yes.
At the end of the meeting, if, you're not allowed to discuss these things, at this time, at the end of the meeting, city council meeting, there's communications and anything's available.
I will politely discuss it.
Anything's available for discussion.
It doesn't seem to, anyone seem to know, because when Mayor Walker put this in with the $12, he said that money was going to help pay the police and the fire department. So, that's got to be part of the budget.
I'm not saying it isn't part of the budget, but it's not earmarked strictly for police and fire either.
It shouldn't be earmarked for anything, because the $12.
It should, it goes into the general fund, am I right?
And who spends that?
And who spends that? Everybody, every department has.
That $12 was not for police and fire. It was for trash.
That's what Mayor Walker told me, that extra money would go for, make sure he had his police department and his fire department. He told me that out of his mouth when we discussed it down there at the school, when he had that need.
We were told that it was for trash pickup.
Well, I don't know what he told you, but I know what he told me.
That's what I voted for.
That'll be on the agenda for next month's council meeting.
And I'll be here.
Mayor, may I say, would you have another moment, please? Just, I would recommend that if you're going to come up and speak, because these discussions are everything valuable and important, please come up, so we can get you on record, and you can be heard, and the public will be made aware. Is that fine? Is that safe to say? That's just, okay.
I have a couple concerns about the budget, that if the public doesn't have anything else that I'll bring up. Probably my biggest concern is the fact that the general fund is $226,000 approximately in the red, and the motor vehicle highway is $323,000 in the red, aviation is $19,000 in the red, and fire territory is $37,000 in the red. I don't think that this is a sustainable budget. We can't operate in the red like this. So, I feel like some changes need to be made in the proposed budget. I know we can cut down on things, we can't increase things. So, some of the proposed changes I would make is looking at the wages. And I know we'll discuss that more when those wage ordinances come up. But I don't think it was fair how the wages were done this year. A lot of people got 3%, but one person got 1%, and then the fire chief got 7% while his men got 3%. So, I feel like the wages weren't done in a fair manner. And then I also have a concern about the $1.22 million of ARP money that has been put into the capital outlay fund with no spending plan. We haven't seen anything from this administration saying how that they're planning on spending $1.22 million, and that spending plan is due October 31st. And when I met with the mayor last Thursday, he said you all hadn't even met. And the committee for the ARP is Tom Guston, Susan, and Miles. So, I'm concerned about putting that out in the budget, just, you know, with no plans on how that's going to be spent. This is the public's money, this is the taxpayers' money, it should benefit everyone. So, those are my main concerns about the budget.
There's also regulations on how that money is spent. We have the 2024 to spend the ARP money, and none of it can go for wages.
But when is the plan due? And why haven't we seen anything of the plan?
According to federal guidelines, they recommend that in fall, we organize the original committee, to have a plan in place, discussed by spring of 2022, with ready to put the changes in place by fall of 2022. So, we are not behind.
When is the spending plan due?
It's not definitively due. There is no cut and dry deadlines.
Eric, do you have any answer for that? Eric?
I was going to ask Eric, because Eric, I watched, I've been watching Keeping Up with the Baker Tilly seven hours.
We're getting a little out of order, Mayor.
Just wait a minute, and go ahead.
Who's running this?
Let him.
Who's running this? That's what I want to know.
It should be me.
Well, it's not. It's the mayor.
And it's a mess.
Eric Walsh, partner with Baker Tilly, been a municipal advisor for the city for a number of years. There's two components, I think, tonight in discussion. There is, in the budget as it stands, approximately $1.2 million, as Councilwoman Edwards Wolf talked about in your ARP fund. If you approve that through your budget, you're approving the appropriation to spend those dollars. However, there's a second requirement to the ARP funds, because they're federal grant dollars, that you, as a council and a city, must pass a formal spending plan for those dollars. In terms of a hard deadline on that spending plan, Susan is correct, it's kind of fuzzy. It's just, you need to have it in place before you start spending the money. So, if you're not going to spend money until spring of 2022, you may not need to have your plan adopted until spring of 2022. If you're going to spend money in January, I would strongly encourage you to have a plan before you spend those dollars that, once again, has to have council approval to do so. I'll also add, if you were to spend, because you already have gotten your first draw or first tranche of those dollars, at the end of October, your first report is going to be due as a city to the federal government. If you spent no dollars, it's a very easy report. You just file and say, we haven't spent any money yet. If you spend any dollars before that, you have to earmark and lay out every dollar that you spent, what it was for, and ensure that it was in accordance with the federal guidelines. Because as you already know, I think, you just can't go spending on whatever you want. There's water, sewer, broadband, a number of health-related issues that you're required to spend it on.
May I ask you?
So, a little bit vague, but does that answer it, Elise?
Yeah.
I would strongly encourage you, though, as a city, don't spend the money until you've adopted your plan.
May I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
When we met with you, the city and Miami County Economic Development Authority organized a meeting, and that was when, in May? When were you down here?
A few months ago. I can't recall, honestly.
It was at that time, if I recall correctly, that Baker Tilly used, I don't remember her name, I'm sorry, she was down here.
Heidi Ampson was with me, yep.
Encouraged, and almost, well, said that we should involve community members. I mean, you explained, could you, once again, tell us, repeat, similar what you said?
So, here's my take, and I'll preface this, I'm not an elected official. Your taxpayers are not paying me to make managerial decisions or electing me to do so. What I've seen around the state, and we work with hundreds of communities in the state of Indiana throughout the Midwest, some communities are doing it, where the mayor or treasurer make the decision, bring the plan to council and adopt it. I'm not saying that doesn't happen. I also, though, have seen plenty of communities that create a steering committee, come up with ideas, and bring it back to, ultimately, though, the final decision has to be passed at council level in your spending plan. So, I don't want to not answer your question, Ms. Plowtho, but I think it's really whatever you all decide, because you're ultimately going to have to vote on the spending plan.
What are most of your councils or most of your cities doing?
Depends on the size, to be honest with you. I've got some small ones that are getting a few hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's, they're maybe having two meetings, and, you know, they're saying, we're going to spend it on water, we're going to spend it on sewer, and we're done.
Okay.
Some of the larger ones, the Fort Waynes, the cities like that, I mean, they're having significantly sized steering committees and multiple meetings, and, you know, they're, as the mayor pointed out, you have, really, you have to earmark the dollars by 2024, you even have till 2026 to spend it. So, I mean, we're talking a five-year type plan here that some communities are going through.
We're just kidding. I get a lot of questions personally about what's happening, and I don't know. So, I, that's a frustration, Mayor, and Susan, with, you know, that, I'm hearing from people who contact me, so.
And I think it's a-
But that's not, you know, that's not your problem.
This isn't, it's just, I think it's important for the public to know, there's very limited scope on these dollars. I mean, you can't go do road improvements, you can't go do sidewalks, you can't go do parks, there's a gray area there, but it's, I mean, it's really water, sewer, health-related, broadband, cybersecurity, there's some pretty dialed-in uses of it.
But you don't have to go ahead and put it in the budget. You could come back later and appropriate once a plan was made.
If you don't appropriate it in the budget through this process, you, if you want to spend the dollars next year, you're going to have to come back and do an additional appropriation at the council level.
So, if they're not planning on spending it until 2024, we don't even need to have it in the budget. It could be re-appropriated later when we have a plan.
And Susan and I talked through this. I mean, I'm seeing it both ways. I have plenty of communities that are budgeting right now, even though they don't have their plan in place, just so they don't have to go back through the process. But there's plenty as well, like you guys, that were saying, why don't we just come back when the plan's ready, and they're going to do an additional appropriation at the same time?
Yeah.
And I think, Susan, either way, really, it's fine.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. I have a couple concerns, questions to my Frida. I'm just going to do it. So, on our tax levy, it's a 4.3% maximum tax levy. Right now, the differential, we're at a, for this proposed budget, we're at 19.96%. So, that is 15.66% differential, which is $700,000, give or take, probably take a little bit. I asked Susan, when I had an appointment with you, what, was there a plan to discuss that differential? That, because that's $600,000 to $700,000 that needs to be resolved before the budget can be adopted. Have you talked about this?
We have talked to Baker Tilly, so I will let him answer the confusion.
Well, let me-
On this? No. Let me, let him answer your question.
Yeah, you're correct, you're correct. I apologize.
Sure. It's a good question and a common one, and I think what I want to do to explain that is use what Councilwoman Edwards Wolf talked at the beginning about the red issue. So, I'm going to use the general fund as an example here.
Okay, sure.
Based on your budget as it stands today, and the revenues we estimate coming in in 2022, if you spend every dollar that's budgeted in your general fund next year, every single dollar, you'd have approximately a $225,000 shortfall in revenues minus expenditures for that year. Now, you have cash in the bank, you can use, et cetera. So, at this point in the process, you cannot go above anything that you've advertised on the levy side. That's the revenues that you're talking about.
Okay.
So, what we advise, and we advise Peru, just like we advise all 100 other of our budget clients, to advertise your levy amounts high by each fund, okay? Because then that gives you the flexibility, if after this meeting and before you adopt, you all decide, well, general fund, I don't feel comfortable at being that far in the red if we spend every dollar, and you go look at another fund like Park, that even if Park spends every dollar that's budgeted, they'll have a $65,000 positive cash flow in that fund. So, you could say, well, I'm concerned about general, I want to take about $50,000 of Park levy for one year only, and levy is your property tax dollars that come in, and move it to the general fund, okay? So, that's one way, you can cut your budget, or you can move some revenues around, but you have to do it in this process. You can't do it next year. After your levies are set, you're stuck for that year with it. Had we not advertised high, which are the numbers you're looking at, Kathleen, you wouldn't have that flexibility, because you'd be stuck at the number of the general fund. So, we artificially inflate those numbers about 15% is what you're seeing. It's not a shortfall. The number that Betsy alluded to at the beginning, that's the real shortfall we expect. The numbers you're looking at are artificially inflated flexibility.
Right. Yeah. I just asked the question to Susan, and as you recall, if you did, that you said that there's no discussion, and you pretty much didn't. You said you don't understand what I was talking about. Do you recall that?
What question was that, Kathleen, that you asked?
I was asking, I'll come back to you. So, I will ask, can I, may I have another question, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. So, on the-
I'm just going to sit there.
Yeah, please. Because I, yeah, because I think you'll have the answers. So, on the, I've got this line two form worksheet.
Is it your line one, or your, yeah, your line two financial worksheet, yep.
Yeah, there's some discrepancies in the, in the fund report and, and the financial worksheet. It says, current disbursements is at 272, 729 per here, but the fund report, I'm sorry, It's not a big discrepancy, but it's $115. The fund report says it's $2,729,515,19. So, there's-
When you're referring to the fund report, are you talking like the Keystone Fund Report out of the accounting system, or what are you referring?
It's disbursements and, and-
Can I come up there and see what you're saying?
Please, yeah, please.
So, your city fund report, you're looking at, printout, I'm seeing it.
Right. Yeah.
Yes, those, I'd have to look at the actual source detail and see why those don't match, but those should be the same as what's in the accounting system. Sometimes, there can be like a check that doesn't clear, or something like that, if it's a small discrepancy, but I don't have the answer tonight.
Okay. And that's just the general fund? I mean, oh, it's not very much money, but $115, so.
Yep, numbers should match. We can get an answer to that.
Does any other council person have any questions?
And you can still bring up discussion during the actual meeting tonight, when the budgets are approved, not approved, but-
It's something that I'm going to give the audience a chance to, to see if they have anything now, it's getting kind of close. So, matter of fact, we're over, but does any member of the audience have any questions on the budget? And there again, we will have question-and-answer period during the meeting tonight. Wayne?
If you raise the trash fees from $12 to $15-
Wayne, Wayne, come up to this.
I'm sorry to be rude.
That's going, if you will wait, this has already been addressed, but if you will wait until the meeting?
Well, I have another one that goes into another form now.
Okay.
Okay, can I ask it, and then you can?
Go ahead.
Okay. If you raise the trash fees from $12 to $15, that will generate about another $180,000. So, are you going to change the number on Form 4B to reflect that on Ms. Lady's revenues? Because right now, you're reflecting the $12 and not the $15.
Well, that's something that we're willing to discuss, we're going to have to discuss. So, you know, I am not going to answer that right now, but if you want to-
Okay, I was just wondering, because it all flows down to the general tax rate at some point.
Yeah, it all comes into general fund.
Right. So, that's all I was asking.
But the thing is, too, with raising everybody $3, it's not going to see an increase in taxes either.
I understand that. I understand. I was just matching up revenues to what's reported in forms, that was all.
Would that be something that needed to be filled out before the budget was adopted and-
Your estimated revenue should match what you anticipate. They're usually reported low, when we did budgets at the schools, the revenues are usually reported low, and like the gentleman said, appropriations are usually, levies are reported high. So, but that's sort of a significant amount of money there if you raise it $180,000. That was all.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a lot of other things to cover tonight.
Mayor, excuse me.
What I want to-
Eric.
Can I make a comment on that?
Eric?
Not, I don't want to get into back and forth, but just to clarify on this, you're raising a fee, you're talking about raising a fee, which is going to have to come back at some point for a hearing and council action. I would not adjust your Form 4B over something that I can already tell is probably going to be, you know, some contention in that. So, you'd be relying on revenue that's never even taken action yet, and may never take action. So, I would not adjust your Form 4B for that.
Thank you for explaining that.
Also, what I wanted to advise everybody in the audience tonight, just, we have till next council meeting. What this is tonight is to put the budget out here, and the council people will have 30 days, as well as Susan and I, before we come back to bring it in, to get it ratified. So, anything is subject to change during them 30 days. You had one question, I'll-
Just one question.
Let it be the last one, and then we'll call this meeting closed and contact, open our regular business meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for understanding, Stephanie Graham, constituent, I'd like to know, why is there a difference in the percentage of raise for the fire chief as opposed to everyone else? And also, how did the, how was the decision made to give the fire chief 7% as opposed to the fire staff?
To answer that real, real quickly, the fire chief has been on a different budget than what the police chief had. He asked to have it brought up equal with the chief this year, and that's how that came about.
May I talk, please, in reference to that question?
So, that seems to be an issue, and I'd just like to bring that forth in front of council here, and talk on behalf of that on my side, and give you my side of the story, and then you can go from there on. And obviously, it is an issue, I'd like to bring that out. There's a lot of factors that factor into that. I went to Mayor Hewitt, and I spoke with him in reference to that. There's a couple notes that were taken with that. One is that the raise that I would be getting would be in Lou or in, or with Sophie Onis, the chief. Basically, what it's going to be is the same thing he's getting. We do the same job, we work the same hours. So, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into that, and I guess if you want me to go into that, I can with different notes, as far as speaking on behalf of that. Basically, you know, why the increase, and I don't want to do a comparison, but it's only going to, it doesn't add to my retirement. It's good for me, and then when I retire, it's good for the next chief. So, it, I would love that raise to go on to retirement, you know, and increase with me, but it doesn't. It stays with the chief who goes on next. I go back to same as a basic firefighter when I retire with those percentages. So, it's not padding my pockets after retirement by any means. It's right now just adding more to the list. Basically, what it's doing is, it's, so, we can't give everybody a raise at the time, so, when I spoke with the mayor, I said, you know, this is what we have, you know, if we can start as a starting point, you know, and say, okay, we're going to start with the chief and work our way down, maybe next year, if we have the money, we can go that route, maybe give assistant chiefs a raise, and make that differential. When Gabe was in, he does, basically what he does, he went in, done the same thing. He started up the chiefs, assistant chiefs, and he made that differential, because we were so close together as far as making money. You got assistant chiefs making as much, if not more, at the time than you did chiefs. So, Gabe went in and changed that and added some to that to make that differential. Honestly, when I took the chief's position, it was a battle for me to take it, because there, I would have made at the time more money as, say, assistant chief and with the other than was, and the days off. So, do I take that decrease in pay, or do I take that chief's job? I took the chief's job. You know, so, we started building from the chief and working our rings down as far as pay, that's a start. You know, that's a start for everybody, and start for the fireman, for the next guy who takes over, it's a start for him as chief. You know, he's going to make that little bit more. And that is a thought that goes through everybody who takes chief's job. Do they want to give up their part-time job to do a day job? You know, and that's a big decision to make. You know, it's a life-changing decision. Do you want to do that and make that, you know, decrease in pay? I had to make that decision, but, you know, then that also makes me work in evenings, you know, doing my other job. But my passion was with the fire department, and I'd done that, and that's why I became chief. And that was a big decision for me, to do that. So, that was, that was one thing. All I asked when I went to Mayor Hewitt, I said, Mayor, I'd just like to be in the same pay as the chief of police. That's all I asked for. We do the same job, we work the same hours. You know, I come in on fires, I get no comp time, I get no overtime, I get no federal overtime, so I don't make any of that extra money, but I still come in for that stuff. I still try and come in for everything that I can and help out with doing that, but I don't get no pay for it. The firemen do, they get overtime, they get comp time, and they deserve every bit of it, you know, than when they come in, especially now going through this whole COVID thing. You know, guys are going on runs they don't want to go on, you know, and, you know, sure, I'd love to have that 6% or whatever it is, but I know our budget can't sustain that because of the way our budget is with the fire territory. I could sit here all night and go through figures with you, and I think Eric vouched for it, you know, the levies and the tax increase, you know, our, as far as my budget, it hasn't changed, as you can see, it hasn't went up. It's actually went down for numbers. Now, as far as personnel, that hasn't went up. So, our personnel is going up for raises, but our money coming in is right here. So, we're doing this scale right here. Last year, we were at $11,000. If we spent every bit, we had, we had $11,000 in fire territory. Is that correct? So, at $11,000, but that's if we spent everything.[1790.54] Last year, I believe I turned $80,000 back in. That was with a little bit of this and that and everything like that because we're trying to increase getting ready for Station Two built. So we're robbing Peter to pay Paul to do that. So, you know, that makes up with our budget, you know, if we continue that going up, up and up, then we're going to start pulling from somewhere else, the general fund, to put money into our fund to help pay everybody, you know? So it's just, it's just a change of times. And a lot of it is, you know, you've got Square D leaving, you know, that take, that took money out of our budget also, you know, that little bit, that little bit does count, you know? So we got to look at the big picture and, you know, I'm getting off track a little bit with money coming into me, but there's a lot of excuses, you know? You know, and you, I don't know how to explain it, but if we don't start somewhere with something, then we don't have anywhere else to go, you know? And with the money that, I think, was it $36,000, Eric? We were talking about this, our shortfall would be.
37.
37,000. Now is if we spend everything, is that correct?
Yeah.
That is if we spend everything. So we have two funds at the fire territory, which is completely different. I don't know if you guys, my door is always open to come in and talk to me about the fire territory funding. It's completely different than the city as far as budgeting on the general fund, completely. We have money in, two budgets, and we spend out. Fire territory, everything from wages to everything done at the station. If we want anything, we don't go to the city and say, hey, we need a new fire truck. We have money in that. And as of July of this year, we are right around a $400,000 range roughly, and I've got it right here, but that we had saved up. And we have to save our money to get those trucks because those trucks are so expensive. So again, you know, we're not at that $36,000. That is if we spend everything out, even with the 3% increase, but there's also if I don't put any money back in. So, you know, there's different things on my budget that we add high, like Eric spoke about, and then, but we may not spend all that money. So we aim high and then we may or may not spend it. This year, we won't spend all that money. I think at the end of the year, we'll be putting a little bit back in. But we also need, one question online was the $75,000 for Station Two. I know that was a concern of yours. So if we look at that $75,000, that is what I call cleanup fee. The city gives us money, we're doing a Station Two, which is the best thing that we can do, but at the end of the day, we need those extra little things. So we got a budget for our fire equipment fund. And what I mean by little things are flagpole landscaping, all those little things that aren't included in building a building that you've got to add to it. We've got radio communications in the building, you know, different, different things like that. So I just put that money in there to make it so when we're done building Station Two, that it's in there and we can spend it. And that is our fire equipment fund, which has excess of $400,000 at this time and is built. It will have another draw, a deposit, I think in December, another $45,000. And so it's going up. This year, we have to spend a dime out of it. I put in there to spend for a new chief's vehicle, but there's no trucks out there. And so I'm not buying this year out of that fund. So there won't be any money spent out of that fund at all. So I put back in.
I'm sorry, out of what fund?
Fire equipment fund. We have two funds. We draw on fire territory and fire equipment.
I've got a whole bunch of information, so.
Yes. So in a nutshell, that's where we're at financially. The $36,000 is, will be if we spend everything, is that correct, Eric?
You're talking the fire equipment fund now?
Fire territory.
Yes, fire territory equipment fund. You'd have a $37,000 negative cash flow if you spend everything.
If we spend everything. So really, we're not in the negative. That is if we spend everything.
Like, we're assuming, like, we're not counting on you not spending everything. What you put in front of us is what we take.
And I understand that.
And you wouldn't have a $37,000 differential if you, you know, you're in charge of your budget. I'm sure you have a say in it. If you take the 3%, like the rest of your men, that would bring it down 2,000.